Right, thank you for coming tonight. We'll call the May 3 Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll please.
O'Riverlo will be absent. Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe will be absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ayton President?
Will join, please join in Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a word of prayer here. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for this wonderful country. Thank you for our freedoms. Thank you for our military men and women and our first responder men and women. We ask for your guidance, patience, and strength and compassion tonight as we represent our community. In Christ's name we pray, amen. Okay, tonight we have one public comment. Come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sheila Fowler. I live at 407 East Fourth Street. Some of you here tonight might know who I am and why I come to speak. Others here have never met me, never heard me speak, but you all know about the issue that I'm about to speak about. I know it's not on the agenda for this evening, but it is a topic I feel needs to be added to an agenda for review and discussion at the next meeting. I'm here to speak to you and remind you, there is an issue on the south side of this town: flooding. I know in the past months, you have been doing the city budget, and it's really sad to hear that yet again, regardless of the plea from Alderman Freeman, the budget does not include any funding set aside for the south side flooding, even though that was pointed out that we currently have $11 million in excess in our city budget. I have lived in my home now for 21 years. I have experienced flooding in my yard and sewage backup in my home five times in those 21 years. I've replaced my water heater five times, my washer dryer three times, my central air conditioning unit two times, and I've had to have my furnace extensively worked on five times as a direct result from the flooding and sewage backup. We have also lost numerous items with the sewer in our basement, and it has absolutely devastated our landscape all five times, not to mention the potential health risk that we have endured in our home. I have waited through that sewage every time in my basement. We have watched countless good neighbors who loved their land, loved their homes, try to improve them, throw in the towel, sell their homes, because they all have the attitude: help will never come. After our last flooding event in 2017, I became quite a regular speaker down here, pleading with you for help, showing you videos of our devastation, and trying to inform you of how much of a health hazard this is to the homeowners that experience it. You answered those concerns by hiring Baxter and Woodman Engineering Firm to study and find a solution. Although, at a recent meeting, Mr. Anderson said, quote, "Will it take care of any and all flooding conditions?" No. Well, I'm going to encourage all of you to read Page 20 and 25 of that south side storm study. Page 20 shows an existing conditions in the six known problem areas with flooding depths that range from 1.9 feet to an astounding 4.5-foot depth during a 100-year storm event. Page 25 shows the proposed conditions of potential flooding upon completion of the five phases that they suggest doing in those six known flooding problem areas. The result would be less than or equal to a half a foot depth, but only in Bellwood Drive location, the other five locations with a zero-foot depth during all storm events. So with that information, I would conclude, that's a pretty good solution. Now, in 2018, the former mayor and some of you here at the city council used our flooding issues to help push through a sales tax increase and a gasoline tax, because you needed the money to help solve the flooding issues and infrastructure problems. I was very supportive of you, knowing that the revenue was needed for this $42 million problem on the south side. But I also pleaded dearly at that time, along with a few other aldermen, to set aside a percent from this new incoming revenue that could be used directly for the flooding, but unfortunately, that's not what happened. So here we are, three years later. Baxter and Woodman Engineering gave us a detailed five-phase planned solution to this flooding. You've collected your revenue from your sales tax increases, not to mention you already had a utility tax that was supposed to help with these types of problems. And now you're asking to create a whole new utility bill that citizens will be required to pay in order to be able to use some of that revenue. Will it really go to us, though? I wonder. Yet, you have barely managed to finish Phase 1 and Phase 2, which are at the very most the two least expensive of the phases. For those of you that don't know, those phases involved reconstructing the retention pond up at the high school and constructing a whole new one at the Bellwood Drive location. Those two projects were fully budgeted and supposed to start and hopefully be completed in the year 2018, but they were postponed for multiple different reasons. One of those reasons, in addition to others, was because you needed to use the free dirt, the free dirt that would be acquired from this area to cap over the old Silver's land so that there could be a walk path. It's really sad to think that it was more concerning with the hazardous ground at Silver's than the fact that these homeowners, including myself, are faced every spring and summer with the potential of raw sewage being pumped into our homes. Raw sewage that we pump out of our homes, legally, I might add, because we've done numerous sump pump investigations. We pump it out, it runs out, and into the storm drain, which goes directly to the river. Wow. What's the EPA say about that one? I do understand that you have started a revised form of Phase 3, but remember, there are three separate components to that phase, along with the other components and improvements for that area to be started before we can even start Phase 4, the most expensive phase, my area. And the revised Phase 3 is not expected to even start until 2022. Well, I'm sure most of you are probably getting tired of hearing me talk about this, probably as tired as I am of living in fear every spring and summer now for 21 years. So I'm going to conclude tonight that at the slow, snail pace that these phases are happening, I don't see where the completion is ever in sight for many more years to come. I even wonder if it'll happen in my lifetime. I'll wonder if I can hand my home down to my children when I'm gone and know that they'll be safe in it, because they're not now. There is not one of you here that would go to a doctor, be given a diagnosis, and told there was a treatment and a cure for your diagnosis, even though it'd be very costly. You would work and find the money for that cure, and you would do it promptly. Well, this has been an issue in this town for longer than most of you have even sat in the positions you currently are sitting in. In fact, this issue has been going on for 40 or more years. And at the time that you make it a priority for the health and safety of your citizens, before the city becomes known as the city of floods and sewage backup and not the city of murals, make this a priority starting tonight. Make this year, and start planning to accomplish more than just one small step every three or so years by setting up a suitable course of action timeline with funds set aside every year and designate it to our $42 million problem. The problem of our health, the problem of the safety, because honestly, when this comes through, my grandchildren, which I'm now looking at adding two more for a total of six, are not allowed to play in my grandma's yard. They're not allowed to be in grandma's yard because there's sewage that's been through it, not along the facts that I have after floods picked up syringes from God only knows where they came from. I ask you this, because we are due for a storm event. Look at the numbers. Came through in 2000, 2007, 2009, 2016, 2017. Well, guys, it's 2021, it's coming. I don't want to live through this anymore, so please, start making this a priority with this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of April 19, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Is there any discussion? If not, all those will vote. Roll call, vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ayton, favor?
Motion carries. Number five, we have no public hearing tonight. Number six, under special messages and proclamations, we have recognition of Alderman Daniel O'Riverlo and Alderman Ratcliffe, Tom Ratcliffe, and I don't believe they're here in the room. So I would like to personally thank both Alderman O'Riverlo and Alderman Ratcliffe for their service to the city. I think Alderman O'Riverlo had served during two different times on the council, and I believe Alderman Ratcliffe had served, I believe, three terms. Is that correct?
2013.
Since 2013, so, two terms. So I would like to recognize them here tonight. We do have a couple plaques for them, very nice plaques, so when we see them, we will present that to them. So, thank you very much, Alderman Ratcliffe and Alderman O'Riverlo. And next, we have the swearing-in of elected officials. So we have Judge Tobin here tonight. Thank you, Judge.
My pleasure.
Thank you for coming. On the rain.
All right. Well, thank you, guys, for inviting me here. Usually, I've got PTSD right now. Normally, when I'm in this room in front of the city council, it was on zoning matters, and with that many people out there, it was not going to go good. So it's a little bit more fun. So let's start first with Mayor Morris. Do you want to do it from there? You want to step down? How do you guys want to do it? Step down?
Sure.
And for all those that are going to be sworn in tonight, we're doing a little bit like Animal House. I state your name, but don't say, "State your name." So, I state your name.
I, Clinton Morris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor of the city of Belvidere.
Of mayor of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Do you want a picture at all with Julie at all up here? I would ask my former administrative assistant, and more importantly, dear friend Julie Morris to come up here so that they can get a picture together.
Watch your step. Watch your back, Corrigan.
Where are we looking at?
We're going to look right at one.
Okay.
There you go. Okay. There.
All right. Look at her.
Elena. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, honey. All right, next up, Sarah Turnipseed. All right. I can get you raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Sarah Turnipseed.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city clerk of the city of Belvidere.
Of city clerk of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want a photo op with anybody up here? You got somebody coming up?
Sarah, I'll get a picture for you.
All right. Who did I give you a dice? Look back at this one. Okay, now, I've got Cory Thorne. Yeah, even smiling. Man. I state your name.
I, Cory Thorne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of treasurer of the city of Belvidere.
Treasurer of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Did you need a photo op up here with anybody? All right, I'll get, yeah, we'll get your signature and then just get that to Sarah. I should get it.
Yeah, you can sign it.
All right. And were you thinking, Attorney Drell, were you thinking en masse for the aldermen or one by one?
It's up to your honor.
I'm felt one by one.
I think one by one.
One by one makes sense. Nobody's in a hurry.
Draining up.
How about?
The aldermen are being canceled.
I know. How about Matthew Flurry?
Thank you.
All right. I state your name.
I, Matthew Flurry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do you have anybody here for you or no? Next up, I've got Marsha Freeman. It's a little like Price is Right. Come on down. All right. I state your name.
I'm Marsha Freeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do you have anybody here for you or no? Next up, I've got Marsha Freeman. It's a little like Price is Right. Come on down.
Come on down.
All right. I state your name.
I'm Marsha Freeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do you have anybody here you wanted to get a photo with? No?
Let's go home.
All right. Next up is Natalie Mulhall. Good evening.
I'm Natalie Mulhall.
All right. I state your name.
I, Natalie Mulhall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do you have anybody here you wanted to get a photo with? No?
Let's go home.
All right. Next up is Natalie Mulhall. Good evening.
I'm Natalie Mulhall.
All right. I state your name.
I, Natalie Mulhall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Anybody here you wanted a photo with? Come on down.
I got a couple things.
All right. Natalie, I'm going to need your signature, and Sarah, I'll get you right there. I didn't type these up. I'm a little disappointed there's no go-bucks at the end of these things. So how about Tom Porter? All right. I state your name.
I, Tom Porter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
Of aldermen of the city of Belvidere.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Photo here with everybody? No? All right.
Thank you, Judge. With that being completed, with that being completed, would the new alderwomen please have a seat at the table? Alderman Mulhall and Alderman Prather, Alderwomen Prather, thank you. So before we go very far, it had been customary under Mayor Peterson and Mayor Brereton as well, that in the past, we'd always given the floor to the newly elected officials if they wanted to say a few words. I certainly extend that in that tradition here tonight. So if you want to speak, you're certainly welcome. To Alderwoman Mulhall, let's start. You can, you can.
Stay right here.
Sure. There's your mic. Yep.
I just want to say thank you to everyone here, the city council, the mayor, the new mayor, my family, who may have left already, but this really was an amazing experience to run for this position, and I'm just really pleased to be sitting in this seat tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderwoman Prather?
I too want to thank everybody who was so supportive during my campaign and who was, who were so encouraging, just trying to step out into something new. I'm really looking forward to working with everyone on the city council, as well as Mayor Morris, and just really hopeful for things for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that tradition in mind, I am going to say a few words myself. So I wanted to thank my wife Julie, I wanted to thank my daughter Elena, her husband, my son-in-law Jason, their children Mason, Madison, and Maddox, my son Michael, my daughter-in-law Christie, their children Ava, Emerson, and Bennett, my brother Cliff and Nicole, my sister Melanie, my brother Clayton and his wife Julie, who couldn't be here tonight, my mother-in-law Yula Nice, and many other extended family, nieces and nephews that I had that were encouraging me along the way in this endeavor. So I also remember when I was at a, I was at an election and an individual happened to win, and he passed on, he said that he would thank some of the other individuals that were helpful with him later on, but I'm not going to do that. I'm going to, I'm going to thank him in public here. So bear with me, please. Alderman Stevens, Alderman Burden, Alderman Freeman, Alderman Porter, Alderman Franks, and Alderman McGee, thank you very much for your understanding and thank you for your support. I appreciate it. And also, former Mayor Rory Peterson. I don't know if Rory is still in the room, but I wanted to thank Rory. Rory has always been a lot of help to me. I consider him a third brother. Also, former Mayor Fred Burden and his wife Marlene. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Marlene. I appreciate, I appreciate all your help and all your best wishes. Also, Jeff Carlisle, county board member, Jeff Carlisle. Thank you, Jeff. And of course, Judge Tobin. Thank you. Thank you for coming out in the rain, Judge. Appreciate it. Also, I want to help, I want to thank all the friends who helped me with signs, ads, and support along the way and encouraged me to be successful. Now, I did want to say that I got my interest in government from a gentleman by the name of, he was a teacher by the name of Stan Patrick, and a lot of you folks probably know him. For those that don't, he was a wonderful government teacher. One of the classes, I got an A in, and he spurred my interest in government. So I would like to thank Stan and also Rory Peterson. Rory was, was a mayor when I first served as an alderman back in the 90s, back in 93 through 97, and I want to thank Rory for all his help throughout the years and all his encouragement. And, you know, to the new aldermen coming in, thank you very much for your running. I appreciate it. That's what makes us go around, so we'll do, we'll do just fine. I look forward to working with you and all the other aldermen, so, and the staff, the administrative staff as well, and all the department heads. So I'm humbled and honored to represent Belvidere, and I want to thank you very much to everybody for their support. Thank you. Let's see, under approval of expenditures, we have none. Under committee reports and minutes of officers, item A, minutes of the committee of the whole in public safety and finance and personnel of April 26, 2021, as presented. Is there a motion as such?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, a second. Motion by Alderman McGee. Any corrections? Any discussion? my son, Michael, my daughter-in-law, Christie, their children, Ava, Emerson, and Bennett, my brother Cliff and Nicole, my sister, Melanie, my brother Clayton and his wife Julie, who couldn't be here tonight, my mother-in-law, Yula Neese, and many other extended family, nieces and nephews that I had that were encouraging me along the way in this endeavor. So I also remember when I was at a, I was at an election and an individual happened to win and he passed on. He said that he would thank some of the other individuals that were helpful with him later on. But I'm not going to do that. I'm going to, I'm going to thank them in public here. So bear with me, please. Alderman Stevens, Alderman Burrington, Alderman Freeman, Alderman Porter, Alderman Franks, and Alderman McGee. Thank you very much for your understanding and thank you for your support. I appreciate it. And also former Mayor Rory Peterson. I don't know if Rory is still in the room, but I wanted to thank Rory. Rory has always been a lot of help to me. I consider him a third brother. Also, former Mayor Fred Burrington and his wife, Marlene. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Marlene. I appreciate, I appreciate all your help and all your best wishes. Also Jeff Carlisle, county board member, Jeff Carlisle. Thank you, Jeff. And of course Judge Tobin. Thank you. Thank you for coming out in the rain, Judge. Appreciate it. Also, I want to help, I want to thank all the friends who helped me with signs, ads, and support along the way and encouraged me to be successful. Now, I did want to say that I got my interest in government from a gentleman by the name of, he was a teacher by the name of Stan Patrick. And a lot of you folks probably know him. For those that don't, he was a wonderful government teacher. One of the classes, I got an A in. And he spurred my interest in government. So I would like to thank Stan and also Rory Peterson. Rory was, was a mayor when I first served as an alderman back in the 90s, back in 93 through 97. And I want to thank Rory for all his help throughout the years and all his encouragement. And, you know, to the new aldermen coming in, thank you very much for your running. I appreciate it. That's what makes us go around. So we'll do, we'll do just fine. I look forward to working with you and all the other aldermen. So, and the staff, the administrative staff as well, and all the department heads. So I'm humbled and honored to represent Belvidere, and I want to thank you very much to everybody for their support. Let's see. Under approval of expenditures, we have none. Under committee reports and minutes of officers. Item A, minutes of the committee of the whole and public safety and finance and personnel of April 26, 2021 as presented. Is there a motion as such?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, a second. Motion by Alderman McGee. Any corrections? Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call on that. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay. Motion passed. Under unfinished business, we have ordinance, we have A, ordinance number 524H as a second reading, and ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, video gaming within a new business, neighborhood business district, excuse me, neighborhood business district located at 600 Logan Avenue. And the city attorney and I had had a discussion. City attorney, would you like to comment?
Yeah, we're still waiting to hear on Mr. Chudhari's efforts of trying to get the parking next to the existing lot so it can remain on the table until we hear back from him.
Okay. We'll leave A, ordinance 524H on the table until we hear back. Item B, ordinance number 531H as a second reading, and ordinance establishing recapture of trip road reconstruction between Crystal Parkway and Corporate Parkway in the city of Belvidere, Illinois. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
We need a first.
We need a motion to approve, I'm sorry. Motion to approve, please. Alderman Franks, second. Alderman Snow. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor will sit. Oops, I'm sorry, Marsha, I didn't see you there. Yes.
So Brian, I think I pointed out last time that the numbers didn't quite add up. Did you go back through and fix that?
Yep. I was taking care of it.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? If not, the clerk will call the roll.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion carried. Item C, ordinance 532H, second reading, and ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, video gaming within the planned business district at 884 Belvidere Road, which is Belvidere Road and Logan Avenue. Is there a motion as such? Alderman Snow, motion by Alderman Snow, a second. Motion by, second by Alderman Mulholland. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor will answer yes, and those no, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion carried. Item D, ordinance number 533H for second reading, and ordinance providing for temporary relief from the full requirements of section 98-12A3 of the city of Belvidere municipal code for the fiscal year 2022, 51 of 2021 to 430 of 2022 for sidewalk cafes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Franks, Alderwoman Franks, second. Second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor will answer yes. All those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Item number E is resolution number 2021-7, a resolution authorizing the execution of an easement agreement for the expansion of General Mills Park. And I believe that's going to remain on the table. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The owner has agreed to the terms of the easement agreement, but we're still waiting on the Phase 1 environmental study. That should be back in 10 to 20 days. So I recommend leaving it on the table until we get that study back.
Thank you. And item F, motion to authorize the Belvidere Police Department to hire an entry-level police officer to backfill for the experienced officer being assigned to the COSAP grant position.
I make a motion to take that off the table.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. So we'll have a roll call vote on the table. To take it off the table, please.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
No.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay. Motion carried. So then, on the original motion to authorize the Belvidere Police Department to hire an entry-level police officer to backfill for the experienced officer being assigned to the COSAP grant, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd inquire the clerk, is there a previous motion on this already?
It came out of committee, so we would need a motion.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion? A motion to that effect?
Yes.
Motion by Alderman Snow? Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. Is there any discussion? Alderman Snow?
I was wondering if we could hear from the police chief again about some of the logistics.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah. We would anticipate that this officer would be assigned to work with program grant partners and would be responsible for going out into the community, working with our patrol officers, our county counterparts, and identify people who are potentially drug addicted, domestic violence victims, as well as mental health, having issues with mental health, and trying to provide them with resources that are going to be appropriate for them to get the help that they need.
Alderwoman Franks?
I was just going to say that we have new aldermen here tonight. I just think this is more appropriate to refer back to committee for discussion.
Alderman Snow?
I would disagree because most of the older people that were newly elected were here for all the discussions. So they've already in tune with everything that was already here. Deny that, if you might. But the other is, it is a timely deal. You can't sit on this forever. It needs to move forward.
Ms. Alderman Snow, Alderman Franks, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
When you address, address the chair, please. Okay. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I do have some program participants in attendance tonight. If there's any questions that any of the aldermen may have for them, they, I know they would be more than happy to provide any information that you may be looking for that could better help make an informed decision. We just want you to have the information that you need in order to do that. If there's any questions for the state's attorney, for Judge Tobin, for Jessica Perillo, who has also been appointed the program manager for the SOR grant. Oh, I'm sorry. Amy Galeno from probation as well. Didn't mean to leave you out. Sorry.
I'd be interested in hearing from Judge Tobin.
Before we do that, Alderman Porter had the floor. Can you, can you give us a minute, Judge? Alderman Porter had his hand up. Alderman Porter?
Okay. I would just like to hear maybe from the state's attorney or chief, either one, whoever has the information about, maybe talk a little bit about crime statistics related to like robberies, home burglaries, and armed robberies and that type of thing related to people who are, you know, trying to support their drug habit. Do you have any type of statistics or anything like that?
I would have to speak anecdotally at this point. It's within the profession of law enforcement, it's not uncommon, based off of my experience in talking to suspects and offenders in my time as a investigator, that ultimately their motive for committing car burglaries, residential burglaries, robberies, their involvement with gangs is all drug-related. Now, getting down to specifics, I don't have any specifics to, to give you tonight, but I can tell you as my experience over the last 23 years that a good majority of the crimes that we deal with here in Belvidere do have some drug nexus.
Alderwoman Prather?
Was it Judge Tobin you were going to ask?
Did you have a comment for the chief?
Um, no.
Okay. Judge Tobin, would you like to?
Sure. Where do you get, like?
Right up here.
Be happy to answer any questions, but I think what this grant is kind of a little bit different. It's kind of probably the next wave of, of its law enforcement, it's community service. And what we're seeing is very, very few cases that I see in the criminal court system are unrelated to either substance abuse, mental health, or a combination. You think, oh my God, is it really that bad? It is. Most substance abuse, mental health things are hidden. People have them. They'll talk about them. And oftentimes, we're only seeing the tip of the iceberg, the people that are arrested or that are in abuse and neglect court. And Miss Prather sees those quite a bit. They're there. Those are only the people that are intersecting with the, the system. Grant like this, though, hits the iceberg below. Prevents more, the idea is to take care of the issue now before there's some criminal offenses, before our community members are victims, before the kids are victims on abuse and neglect. And ultimately, just, we owe it to our common, common community, try to help out those that are in need, especially with the mental health. And what you end up seeing is people stigmatized with the drugs, drug addicts, and stigmatized with the mental health. And what they end up doing is they just self-medicate. Rather than going and getting the treatment they need, they go out and buy some drugs. And so, again, what the goal here is, is let's not just wait for them to commit a crime. It's almost like NBC Minority Report. It's like an old Tom Cruise one where they had, they were able to predict when people were going to commit crimes and then arrest them beforehand, so before they commit the crime. Here, this is sort of the same philosophy, I think, is let's go out and find these people before they commit crimes, before they abuse the kids, before they're unable to go to work, serve their, the rest of the community, and just be good community members. And let's, let's get that now, before we get to that tip of the iceberg where they're either in juvenile abuse and neglect court, they're in criminal court, they're going through a divorce, and the kids suffer. And so, again, it's more than just the intersection with Chief Woody, with Sheriff Ernest, state's attorney, Smith. More than that. It's really trying to hit them before they get to that point. So I think it's sort of the new wave. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions for anybody. Yeah.
Could you comment a little bit about how drug court works? I know we have that option right now available, and just coming in, how that?
It is. So let's, using my analysis, we've got the people at the tip of the iceberg. They've already hit the criminal system. And for drug court, it's felonies. So, and we typically, these are people that would either go to prison or go on probation, but probably not probation because their addiction's so bad. They're probably, their next step is prison. Prison seems like a really easy answer. It's expensive, 25 grand a year to house somebody. But it's like a boomerang. You know, they go for a year or two, and they come right back. They still have the same addiction issues. So in drug court, what we try to do is give them the tools that they, that they need so that when they are no longer on the tip of the iceberg, where they're no longer involved with the criminal system, that they can better themselves, they can better the family. Success rate's not great. We do our best. And I would defer probably to Amy over there, but I would say that we have at any point in time probably somewhere between 10 to 15 people in drug court. They meet usually every other day with a drug court probationer. We address things such as, now do they get the treatment, but education, you know, they got to get a job, do some things there. And so, but I would say, I don't know, Amy, what would you say? Our graduation rate from drug court, maybe 25%? Yeah. Some people just aren't ready when they're in drug court. It's, it's just easier, honestly, for a lot of drug addicts just to go to prison. If they get a year in prison, they get day-for-day credit, so they're out in six months. They've probably done a little bit of local time before they go. And when they get out, they're really not monitored by anybody. Drug court, they actually have to be with us for a couple of years, report to a probation officer, if not daily, but every other day, do drops, do treatment, do a whole lot of things. It's, it's a lot harder. And so, for those that are ready to, they, they do well in drug court. But for those that aren't, they're not. But again, this is the intersection, only at the tip of the iceberg. But it's an excellent question. Yeah, Amy?
The cost per drug purchase can be under 6,000.
Yeah. So if you?
The cost to house an immigrant, part of corrections is closer to 30.
Is it up to 30? So again, the, the whole idea there is these are, let's see if we can avoid sending them to prison and save the state 24 grand a person. So we've had some success.
Alderwoman Franks?
Well, this is sort of a new program for us, for Boone County.
Oh, yeah.
How many people are going to be receptive to this? Because if they have the police come into their door. That's, you know, something that they're not really wanting to do at that point. Is it going to be, this is what you have to do, or else? Because I don't know about.
This, we got, and that's an excellent question. With the, part of the iceberg above the water, drug court, for example, there isn't a "or else." There is a "or else." Going to jail, going to prison, or taking your kids, whatever it might be. The "or else" is what you got. For all those underneath, it's more of, this grant person would be out there hitting the people they know have some addictions and, you know, trying to do, to get them into treatment. Forcing somebody into treatment hardly ever works. They got to be ready. The "or else" hardly, hardly ever works for a drug addict. They usually have to be ready. But I tell you, every time I see them, very few drug addicts do I see that are really happy and proud to be drug addicts. You may have some that are either, you know, pro-pot, anti-pot. You might have some that, that like alcohol, don't like alcohol. You find a heroin addict, they wish that they were dead most of the time. And oftentimes, they do kill themselves and get an arc hand back. And it could be anybody. Anybody thinks that they know exactly, kind of laughed when, you know, when I went out to high school. We were so clicky. Your druggies were across the street, over off of, you know, right outside the pig lot. Anybody that doesn't know the pig lot, kids these days don't know how good they have it. That, that's where, that's where the druggies were. And if they were part of the group and that's, if you were going to consume drugs, that's where you went. That was the group. Now, it could be anybody's kid. Anybody says, it's not my kids, lying. Or just, just, they just don't know. Could be your neighbor, could be your cousin, could be a niece or a nephew. And so, again, the people that you go to, the, the officer that goes to the door should have a relative idea of who's using and who's not. You know, honestly, back in high school, revert back to that, we sort of knew who might have been using and who wasn't. We knew who would drink, we knew who would smoke, we knew who, who was doing more. We sort of had a pretty good feel of it just because we were around people all the time. And the idea here is you get an officer who knows families and knows all the families. You know, she or she might have a real good idea of. You go to the door and say, listen, you know, I see a lot of people coming to your door. They're staying for about five minutes and they're taking off. What's that mean? You know, there're probably some hand-to-hand transactions going on right there. Maybe not enough to get an arrest warrant, maybe not enough to get a search warrant, but maybe enough to, to figure out if that person could use some, some treatment. How are the kids doing? Interactions as opposed to arrests. I don't know, as far as data goes, I couldn't tell you. Hopefully, we'd be keeping data to the point that five years from now, there'd be some great numbers. You know, in theory, the arrests are down, juvenile abuse and neglect court numbers are down. But in reality, we may not see that kind of data. Because again, if we're hitting the people underneath the water, these are people that may never, may be struggling with life, and their kids may be struggling because of the parents, but never have interactions with the court system. Yeah.
Yes.
We've touched a lot on the drug addiction part of this. Can you speak on the impact that this may have on domestic violence by, because these are other issues that this officer will also be dealing with, as well as the mental illness aspect. Can you speak on that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that I would not, I would defer to Amy as being much smarter Galeno in the, in the concept of it. But I don't think it's a stretch to say that if you've got alcohol and, and mental health issues and you've got a domestic relationship, whether it be kids or intimate partner, the chances that you're going to be in domestic violence is greater. There's also domestic violence victims that are likely going to self-medicate themselves. If you're getting beaten on a regular basis, how do you escape? There's some mental health treatment for victims that they need, that, that are victims of domestic violence. So, you know, you bring up a good point. You're talking across the board here between domestic violence, mental health, and substances. You take those three things out of the mix, I'm out of a job, I don't have anything going on during the day. At least in this community, we don't have just the good old fashioned bad person. At least we don't see many of them. Most of them come already broken in front of the court. Many are ready to be fixed, some are not, but they're broken. They're not typically just your, your bad apples that you might have in some other communities. I don't know if that answers or not.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a question so much as a comment, a couple of comments, actually. There's no denying that we have a problem, society as a whole, the country as a whole, Belvidere, Boone County. But it's a county problem, not a city problem. And there's a reason that the county pushed this off to the city because they don't want the expense that's going to come along with this, first of all. So, a grant doesn't mean free. A grant just means it's subsidized. My theory is, you're right, people don't get help unless they're ready for help. You can lead that horse to water, but you can't make it drink until it's ready to drink. An officer knocking on people's doors that has probably had interaction with, in the past, as far as arresting them, that's how they know them, is not going to be welcoming, oh, hi, officer, here, let me take that card, and I'm gonna, you know, buddy up with you and go get myself some help, if that person is not rock bottom ready for help. I think this grant money should either be put back to the county and let them foot the excess bill. I had a conversation with Chief Woody. We are currently two officers short. This would put us three officers short. And we cannot replace these officers until at least another year for COVID training delays. We are on a waiting list, however, we're not at the top of the list. So, we're going to be three officers down. That means more overtime. That means more officer burnout. And the Health Department should take this money, either put it back to the county or, in my opinion, hire a drug, mental health counselor, professional at the Health Department so that when these people are ready, they can seek that help and it will be readily available to them, maybe take some of the money and help pay for some of their rehab. But they're not going to welcome an officer when they're not ready to. When they are ready to, that resource should be available at the Health Department for them to go use.
Yeah, as far as hiring somebody other than an officer, I don't think the grant was written that way, so we don't really have the flexibility to do that. It's either an officer or no officer. If I'm, I guess, is that, am I wrong on that?
No, that's accurate. The COSAT grant has to have an officer as one of the partners. Our other partner in the COSAT grant is Rosecrants, and they are providing intensive outpatient treatment in the jail. So, the county is on board with that half of the grant. So, it's a $600,000 grant that is life-free money from the Department of Justice. It's a rolling grant. We could reapply in three years if we are in support of the liberal. We can certainly apply for a renewal agreement. So, the county has picked up that portion and put that in place in partnership with Rosecrants for treatment in the jail. So, I want to talk about that officer, not just for the criminals. That officer is really going to be reaching out to victims. It's a huge portion of this grant. Victims of domestic violence, victims of forgery, victims of burglaries, victims of a mental health episode. You know, we don't want to just target criminals. It's all of the citizens of Belvidere. So, those officers are going to be going out to a lot of calls, not just a criminal call. If the police were involved, they will be following up on that call. So, somebody doesn't have to be a criminal to get help from this program. Truly for the citizens.
And your question is personal. That's, that's the person you need to talk to on that one. But anybody else-
Is there, is there any other questions for Judge Tobin?
Just Chief?
Okay. Anybody else? Clayton, did you have one for a judge?
Oh, not for Judge Tobin, no. The thing I'm questioning is, you know, this is going to be your basic nine-to-five job Monday through Friday. I think there's going to be a lot of weekends and after-hours. And as I recall, overtime is not covered under this. I look at this as being a giant overtime, and we're going to be three officers short. There's going to be a lot of overtime for the officers being gone. I still think that this needs to be a social worker slash counselor instead of a police officer because they're going to be going to the same people. Addicts relapse constantly. You know, when I was on the fire department, if we had an addict that was down, gave Narcan, they were mad as hell when they came out because you just messed their high up. You know, when you've got addicts, domestic violence people, they don't think they have a problem. It's all the rest of us that have a problem that are trying to push this on them. So, I still don't see us putting a police officer in there because a lot of times, they've already had negative with these, with officers, a lot of these people. And I, like I said, I still look at the overtime, it's going to be substantial for doing this.
Chief, Chief Woody, would you like to address that?
Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure where you're getting your statistics on overtime. I thought we were, you know, we provided, you know, a great deal of information stating that, that overtime would be only authorized once it was assessed based off need. And truly, it was put in the intergovernmental agreement for the mere fact of transparency. There may be, you know, on occasion, some few and far between after-hour community policing type of awareness events that may be appropriate for this person. But this position is supposed to be a daytime position. That there is no intention of that officer to get called out after hours to handle, you know, any drug-related domestic violence or mental health issues. The goal is for that officer to get that information on the next business day and then follow up with it with the program partners. That, that's, you know, that is the intent of this officer. And the overtime can be controlled, can be regulated, and can be minimized significantly. I mean, ultimately, if the council said, yeah, we'll approve it, but no overtime, okay. We can do that. We have that ability. You know, obviously, we would like within the program to have a little bit of flexibility because there are some community engagements that would be beneficial for this officer to maybe speak, speak at. Because, you know, getting that officer's face out there, known to not only potentially, you know, clients of the program, but families of the clients and, you know, potential victims, or just to reach out to kids and to bring about awareness of what the program's supposed to, supposed to be about, what we're trying to achieve within our community. In terms of, you know, being behind in, with personnel. If the council decided to go ahead and approve this position, yeah, we would be committed to assign an officer to this position. And when we first, when it was available, we would hire somebody to replace that officer. And with COVID, we are kind of behind the eight ball on that, no doubt about it. You know, can I say for sure what exactly that's going to entail in terms of cost? No, I, I can't. You know, to be completely honest, and, you know, our, our goal here is to give you the information to make an informed decision. But ultimately, you know, what else did you ask, Marcia? I know there were a couple of other things that you took issue with.
I just, you know, Shane, you and I talked at length on the phone. I've talked to you multiple times. You know my position on people, either they're ready or they're not.
Sure.
And, you know, people form their positions on personal experiences. That's how we form our opinions on everything throughout life is from our own personal experiences. I feel like, and I've expressed it many times, that it would be better use of the funds, whether they're taxpayer money or grants, that the Health Department employ a professionally trained person to help people that are looking to seek help, whether it's a battered wife or battered husband or a drug addiction person, or an alcoholic, or whoever they may be that don't know how to get themselves into Rosecrants or don't have the, the insurance or the means or the support at home, that they could call the Health Department and they could say, yes, we have somebody for you to come down here and talk to. Yes, we can help you get enrolled in that program. Yeah, because, like I said, people don't get help until they're ready for help. And your mom can tell you, your brother can tell you, you know, anybody can tell you, you need help, man, and you're not going to do it until you want it. So, and if you're a victim, then yeah, I would hope you would call the Health Department and reach out, the Police Department working with the Health Department could say, we have a person at the Health Department. Get ahold of this person at the Health Department. They can help you. They can steer you in the right direction. They can show you the resources that we have to help you. I just don't think that it's a position for an officer.
Sure. No, and I appreciate your candor. The reality of it is, we are just one part of the whole. And we are going to have people who are specialized in, you know, dealing with addicts and domestic violence and mental health situations. We are truly going to act, well, one of the roles that this officer is going to play is a bridge between the Police Department and the Health Department. And, you know, to say that just because they dealt with the police automatically indicating that, you know, it was a negative reaction, isn't necessarily true. I mean, that, that's an assumption based off generalities. You could speculate that, but that's not always the case. I mean, a lot of our officers walk away from a lot of different situations making very good connections. They, they build that rapport and build those relationships. And, you know, the officer that we would select is going to have to be able to, to deal with people. They're going to have to be able to make those connections, build those rapport. And that's one of the reasons why we're looking for a experienced or veteran officer because they come pre-established with that ability, those communication skills necessary for this position. I'm not saying that, you know, somebody else couldn't do that equally as well. The reality of it is, the grant, the grant partners identified that this was a missing piece within the program itself. And, you know, they approached the Police Department, and I explained before, when I looked at what they were trying to accomplish and then saw the direction that our community policing program was going, it, it fit like a glove. I mean, it was a, a missing piece of what we were trying to put together. So, it just seemed to make sense to me. And that on top, and I know we're going to agree to disagree in terms of, you know, it being free money or not. But the reality of it is, there's a significant portion of funds that the Department of Justice had looked at our grant proposal and said, yes. I mean, how many communities do you think have gotten $600,000 for a position like this? I don't have that number. I'm kind of throwing it out there. If you, if you know it, please, you know, tell me. But, you know, this, this is something truly special for our community, and I, I truly would like to see us take advantage of it.
Alderman, Alderman Franks first, then Alderman Porter?
I'd like to know, what do you call success? How many people are you going to reach? Is it, how are you going to call it a success? Or are you calling it a success because you're getting $600,000?
Well, right now, the only thing that I have to look at is what we've already accomplished. We haven't been given the opportunity to, you know, try and engage with anybody beyond this point. So, yeah, a success to this point would be getting the grant.
But how many would be, would be considered a success, like ten in a year?
Well, I guess-
Ten, ten victims or ten addicts? I mean, I want to know what your goal is besides just kiddiness.
Sure. No, that's a great question. I guess I posed the question to everybody. So, if we were able, able to identify a deterrence level and you're able to say that my car didn't get broken into or my husband or wife didn't batter me or I was able to get the mental health treatment that I needed even once, would that be a success? I mean, do we solve every crime that, you know, is committed? No, but that doesn't mean we don't try. Sometimes, we may have better years than others. And I think our goal is to be as successful as we possibly can. But until, given the opportunity, time will tell just how successful we'll be.
Alderman Porter, and then Alderman Fleury?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I kind of have two, two questions here. The first question is, do we have any statistics? Or do we know of any other communities that have utilized this program for a while now that can, you know, vouch one way or the other that they're, this is working? Or that, you know, has this been going on for a while? Is this a new program?
No, it's not a new program. Amy, do you, do you or Jessica have anything that can?
We are involved with mentorship program, Butler County, Ohio. They have had a working COSAT link for several years now. So, we signed up to be, them to mentor us so they could guide us in the right direction. Their program has been successful. As it turns out, we're kind of at equal spots with them on things that we're doing now, trying to roll things out. So, we feel that Butler County has been successful in implementing with the Police Department and other community partnerships with everybody working together. I don't know if that answers your question. Jessica, you, Jessica's our program manager, Jessica Willow. She may have other information.
You good, Alderman Porter? Do you have another question?
I did have one other question. You know, having had family members that have been victims of crime, which probably were related to people trying to support their habit, I can't say that for sure, but I'm, I'm tending to kind of lean towards giving this program a try. But my concern is the same as Clayton- But my concern is the same as Clayton's about the taxpayers paying for this over and above the grant. So I guess what I would like to ask, this might be for Attorney Drell or whoever can answer it. Is there some way that we can write into the, you know, modify the wordage to terminate this program early if we find out that the taxpayers are having to pay for, you know, over and above the grant money if we're running into a lot of money where the taxpayers are paying for the bill?
So it's important to recall what we're actually discussing this evening. We're not discussing the intergovernmental agreement to assign a police officer to the Health Department. This council already approved that agreement. That's done. It's been signed. It's in place. The only question is whether or not to hire an officer to backfill the officer that would be sent over to the Health Department to do the work. That's what's before this council this evening. As far as overtime, the council actually can direct the chief what it wants to do with respect to overtime to some extent. I'd encourage you not to hamstring the chief too much. But obviously, and it's been done in the past, it's happened with the fire departments, happened with the Police Department in previous years, where the council said, guys, the overtime is way too high, you got to find a way to cut it, and they did. That's not verbiage in the agreement because the agreement's done and signed. That's just directions from this council to its chief as to how they want him to operate his department.
Alderman Porter, is that it? Okay, thank you. Alderman Fleury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of comments, like the attorney just said, you know, I think we get kind of muddied up here that the COSEP grant has been approved, what we're talking about tonight is hiring this officer. I know that they kind of go hand in hand, but, you know, at this point, we're talking about hiring another officer. And, you know, we talked earlier about, you know, being down two personnel. And Chief, when you talked about this originally, you know, the kind of idea was although this is temporary, a three-year grant, hopefully we can get it for another three and do six years where the Belvidere taxpayers are not paying for this officer, but we have an officer, an additional officer that's going to be on the city roll in the event down the road when an officer retires or like just recently happened, the officer didn't make it through FTO. It sure would be nice to go ahead and hire that person on now full-time and they're part of our Police Department as opposed to having to wait a year or two trying to get the Police Academy. So to me, this seems, you know, a really great opportunity where we have an opportunity to have an additional police officer that's going to help out the community. So we have someone working with the COSEP grant, now we have an additional officer that's going to backfill them that is, you know, again, at the end of the day, I think if we can save one life in Belvidere, I think that's, I think that's a success. And on top of that, the fact that the taxpayer here is in the city aren't having to pay more, I think that's just a win-win situation. Additionally, with, you know, some of the concerns of the overtime budget, and again, I wouldn't want to hamstring Chief in saying what you can and can't do, but we've approved an overtime budget in this latest budget. So in the past few years, have we ever gone over that approved budget?
Not since I've been chief.
Thank you, Chief. And again, that's it, just that, you know, I understand there may be some additional cost of overtime, but it's nothing that's going to be outside of our budget that we've already approved on. And yes, I don't want to put any additional burden on the taxpayers. But, you know, in this case, it seems like a fairly great deal for everybody, for the Police Department, for the city. I understand some people are concerned with that the county should be doing this, but we had an entire task force of judges, attorneys, you know, Health Department people all came together and came up with the best idea would be a police officer. So I think that, it seems to me that, you know, having a great discussion is good here, but it sounds to me like the best thing to do is go ahead and hire that additional police officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So have we already moved this, since it was approved? Have we already moved this officer? Now we're just looking to replace it? Or are we waiting to move this officer until you get to go ahead to replace it?
No, I'm waiting until we get the approval to hire another officer to assign the veteran officer to the grant program.
And so if this doesn't pass tonight, then you will still go ahead and move in officer? And we'll just be short? Or will you wait until, what are you going to do?
Nope, that's why I haven't made any commitment with the Health Department because I wanted to see if this is going to pass. And if it ends up passing, then I could justify a period of time between hiring a new officer and assigning this officer. But if this doesn't pass, it would not be my intention to participate at that point.
I will note, I mean, if we do not have, I'm sorry, Mayor-
It's okay.
If we do not move on this by May, by June 1st, we have to have a vote. If we do not have a chance of moving to come to the county.
Alderwoman Freeman, did you have another comment, long as we're-
So it was my understanding from Amanda Meele that you could just redo the wording of your grant with the state and you could still get the grant, it just wouldn't include an officer. Or maybe you could go back to the county and do a county officer instead. Or maybe do like a different, like a mental health professional at the Health Department or something else to that effect, and you wouldn't lose the money. You would just have to maybe reapply for it and you would still get it.
I know our rollout time, we have a nine-month plan to do, you know, nine months planning through to actually then roll out the grant, to actually move some pounds, working the grant. Our nine months is about that time, I think. So how that would work to rework it at this timeframe, I would need to collect to Amanda, and she's not available this month. I do not know that information, so I apologize.
Could you, could you come up and state your name for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Jessica Perillo. I'm the new core program manager. I've been in this position for about a week, so I'm a little worried about what I got myself into. But I wanted to make a comment on that. If we do have to rewrite the grant, we will have to go through the approval process all over again because we're looking at new deliverables, new staff, new positions. That doesn't mean that the $600,000 is gone. It means it's no longer there and we would re-have to apply for it all over again. So there is a chance that we lose it. And I do want to make it clear that if we don't approve this, our subcontract with Rosecrans will not be able to go forward and we will no longer be able to provide substance abuse services in the jail. That is the other half and the other piece of this that is really relying on our moving forward with the whole thing. Thank you.
So I just have a question. So would you expound on that a little bit for us here tonight? As far as we will not be able to provide any services then in the jail if this grant doesn't go forward? Is that what you just said?
Yes. So the other piece of this grant, there's two pieces. One piece is the community law enforcement officer that we're looking to move forward by filling the police officer position that we're voting tonight. The other piece of that grant that it takes care of is providing a Rosecrans full-time addiction counselor in the Boone County Jail to provide group services, mental health assessments, substance abuse assessments, and post-release plans. So the both of those pieces were identified as gaps. And right now, the community law enforcement piece has kind of been slowed down. So therefore, the Rosecrans piece has been slowed down and we have not been able to move forward with that subcontract because we need to know for sure that we get that money. And the only way that we're going to do that is by moving forward with our June 1st date.
Any other questions for Ms. Perillo? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So we've never had any type of drug counseling or anything like that at the Boone County Jail, ever? We've never had that service?
That's a difficult question for me to say. I don't know if ever, we currently do not have drug-
We have had volunteers, we have had volunteers come in, which are troops. And at times, we've had alcohol commanders come in to do some cross-step meetings, but we've never had a licensed practitioner to provide outpatient services, intensive outpatient services. This is a huge move, huge. And the county, you know, they embrace that portion of the program to do that.
I just happen to come from Rosecrans. My previous position was the outpatient coordinator that oversaw the substance abuse programs in Boone, Winnebago, and Stevenson Counties. I was actually in charge of hiring and interviewing the substance abuse counselor to be placed in the jail. And we did stall our process due to continuing to have discussions about the community law enforcement officer. So it is very important to Rosecrans and very important to the jail and very important to us.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So this kind of changes my perspective a little bit because I, my whole thing was we need a professional person involved here at some way, shape, or form, which I always thought it would be at the Health Department. But if we're, if this grant is helping to pay for that at the jail to people that we know need it and really have no, I mean, they're going to take the class or whatever it is because they're in jail, then I wish I had known that a little earlier because that changes my perspective a little bit.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other question? Alderman Snow?
Could we hear from the state's attorney if she has any additional?
I don't want to be repetitive. I fully support all the comments that were made by Ms. Perillo, Ms. Pano, Judge Tobin. I think it's a very important piece of the grant to go forward and work in our community. I focus a lot in my job on victims that we come across as we prosecute the crimes in our community. And people sometimes say that drugs are a victimless crime, that's not true. We deal every day with victims. I have a full-time victim witness coordinator that works with people. So my focus is if we can help people from being victimized in our community, I would like to see this go forward, and I really think that this grant would do that. We're going to have someone out there working with people before they get into the criminal justice system to be able to hopefully divert them from that and therefore preventing more victims in our community. So I would be very supportive of this grant. If you have to ask or answer any specific questions that have not already been answered or discussed.
Anybody have any questions for state's attorney Smith? Or anybody have any questions for anybody else? Alderman Snow?
I'd ask if you could chime in and give us your opinion, what comments you think are pertinent.
Well, I will tell you this much, I think this is a council decision. I don't know that if I'm versed enough, I've come in here lately and I don't know that I have all the answers myself. I think this is a decision that's made by the council. I'm sure Alderman Snow, you'd like me to go ahead and give you an opinion right now, but I will give you an opinion if we go to a vote here. If I have to vote, I'll vote, trust me. But, you know, you were on this council, this has been batted around. Unfortunately, now, this was tabled and here we are. So I guess here we are. We're going to either, you know, we're going to judge this tonight for what it's worth. So, but I don't really think that, from my vantage point, that I have all the information. I wasn't here at all the meetings that you sat at. I wasn't here at all the meetings, the other aldermen that were here and well-versed on. I haven't been. I haven't been able to meet with all the aldermen either, you know, to be able to discuss this. I've tried, but unfortunately, I've only had so much time. So, you know, this is a call, we'll make the call here. It's up to the council. Is there any other discussion? I'm going to recognize in the audience, former Mayor Burton, please.
I knew there was a reason I never came to a city council. I was hearing the conversations and watching the discussions of the past. It's true, the intergovernmental agreement has been passed and signed and sealed by a previous administration. But I believe there's a method that the intergovernmental agreement can be amended or even terminated. One of the suggestions, and I think one of the concerns that I'm hearing is not so much the merit of the program. There seems to be pretty much a majority consensus of the program itself. But it comes down to who's going to fund it. And the vote has been thrown into the court of the city council to fund this position in 100%. Previous administration was presented the idea of perhaps splitting that cost with the county since it is, I think, somebody had mentioned earlier, it is a county-wide program. The simple fix to address that issue might be a simple amendment to the intergovernmental agreement. I've heard of the city council on that and to the city attorney as to whether or not that's accurate. But if you could split the cost of that officer or if all of the costs are covered by the grant, but anything exceeding that grant would be split by the county. I think the citizens of Belvidere and the taxpayers of Belvidere would feel a little bit better as to endorsing this program going forward. I thank you for encouraging, and you won't see me again for a long time.
Well, I appreciate you being down here tonight, Mayor Burton. I appreciate your comments. I think, you know, they're quite pertinent and I appreciate you coming here, staying, taking an interest. Thank you. So with that being said, any other discussion here? Anybody else? We're going to stay here till midnight if we have to. No, that's fine, Alderman Porter, please.
Well, in light of the comment that was just made, what we need to do to do that, to split it with this county and city, could we go ahead with the vote for the officer tonight and then make that decision? Or would we have to make it contingent on, you know, another vote?
Well, I'm going to defer to the city attorney. I have my own idea about that, but I'll defer to him and we'll see if we come to an agreement.
They're related, obviously, the two issues. The only thing on the agenda tonight is the hiring of the police officer. Any amendment to the intergovernmental agreement would have to come down the road. I was not involved in the grant application process nor in the approval process at all. That was all handled through the Health Department. My understanding, because this was bannered about several months ago, and forgive me because my brain's a little foggy into what the details were. There was some discussion about that and there were issues with having to go back to the state and rewrite parts of the grant to even effectuate that change. Which raises the same delay issues that was brought up a little while ago. So the easy answer is yes, you can always amend an intergovernmental agreement with the consent of all the parties. That's a given. The two hard questions are number one, would the county agree to fund? And what we're really talking about is the overtime and any other ancillary costs. Would they agree to it? That's the first question. I got the impression that it's tied up with grant issues and why they wouldn't be able to if that became an issue. The second problem you run into with it is if you choose to do that, does that delay jeopardize the grant? I don't know the answer to that. That I would have to defer to the people that wrote the grant. With respect to making one contingent upon the other, I don't recommend going that route. If you're going to amend the agreement, amend the agreement. But to me, if you prove something contingent on another future event, can you do it? Yes, but it does create issues down the road where things get dropped between the cracks. And it's much easier to get your ducks in a row and do it right the first time than do contingency approvals. Not that we've never done them, we have. Not that we've never done them, we have. I just don't really recommend them. I don't know if the answer to your question, Alderman Porter. Yeah, you can amend it. I would do the, it's gotta be by separate motion. It would probably be directing myself or the chief to talk to the county about doing that, but you'd have to put off any decision upon that to a future date. You cannot do it tonight.
Alderman Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So along those lines, then, I'm just kinda thinking out loud here, maybe with the city attorney's assistance, if we made an amendment to the current motion to be contingent upon an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement, could we do something like that? Attorney Drella?
Can you legally do it? Yes.
Okay, so, just thinking out loud again here, so a motion could be made to amend this, to make it contingent upon the intergovernmental agreement being amended, and we can take it from there? Is that correct?
Amended in what fashion? And I'm not trying to mince words, but I think you want the motion stated succinctly, and then the chair can always reiterate it then for the understanding of the councils, that the motion to amend would be to make the approval of a, the hiring of a new entry-level police officer contingent upon an agreement with the council to amend the existing intergovernmental agreement for the COSAP officer, to split the cost of any overtime or other ancillary costs for the assigned officer.
Yeah, I'd go along with that. I'm just still thinking about the split. I think it's, I think that would be fair.
And again, you are, I don't know this, what this does to the grant. I don't know, I don't have an understanding myself of what this does to the timing of the grant. But that's, if he's making that motion, I guess he's waiting a second for the amendment.
Well, I was just thinking out loud. I didn't, should I make it official?
It's up to you.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor then to amend the intergovernmental agreement as drafted that will include all overtime and ancillary costs to be shared with the county. Did I capture it?
It'd be a motion to amend the motion to authorize the Belvidere Police Department to hire an entry-level police officer to backfill for the experienced officer be assigned to the COSAP grant position, subject to an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Boone County for the COSAP officer to provide for an equal split of any non-grant-covered expenses for that police officer.
Sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to inquire with people that know more about the grant, what this kind of delay, because if there isn't amendment...
Well, I think that probably is gonna be forthcoming with the alderman. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I understand what we're trying to accomplish here, but it sounds to me like with making this amendment to the motion, it sounds like we could put a lot of other things in jeopardy. And I understand the, the idea of sharing costs, and that is important, and I get that, but it seems to me of, when we're trying to split hairs here, that we have a, there's a real possibility that we could lose out on a $600,000 grant. What I've heard from most people here that have talked about the grant is that, you know, this has been going on for nine months, and we, I mean, I think I even remember when it was first brought up, I think last May, and we talked about this COSAP position, when the chief was just getting a feeling of whether that would work. And since then, you know, it was tabled so that, you know, the, by members here because they were concerned about the new administration, part of the budget, so, so it has been put on the table to talk about until tonight, but I think that by making this amendment, there's a real good chance that we're gonna lose out on $600,000 overall, and like you had mentioned about losing out on the Rosecrans counselor. It just seems to me it's a tricky thing that I don't think we wanna delve into that's going to jeopardize the overall costs. Again, you know, with this grant, you know, the officer, it's for three years, and, you know, after three years, when we go to renew the grant, we could maybe write it differently or have some different input or decide that, you know, it hasn't made a difference. But it sounds to me like, again, for me personally, we save one life, that's, that's all that we need to do to make a difference when it's not costing us more. I understand that there was some overtime concerns, but it, it seems to me that it's already covered by our existing budget. So to try to recoup some of that cost, I understand the intent there, but to recoup a couple thousand dollars and lose out on $6,000 seems to not be a good deal to me, and that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody wanna answer that question about the, putting the grant in jeopardy as far as this, as far as this amendment?
Yes.
Okay? All right. Please.
I just wanna make it clear that it will very severely jeopardize the grant. We're running out of time. It's been tabled, it's been discussed. We're really here to do the best that we can with the opportunity that's been given and presented to us. It will jeopardize the grant funds, it will jeopardize everything about the grant, and it will jeopardize the Rosecrans contract within the jail. I completely understand that there are concerns about financial costs. I know that that's something that you guys have to think about, and I'm glad that you're thinking about it. However, I think that it's been positively discussed that the only concerns here are overtime, which has to be pre-authorized by the chief, and it is already based on a budget that's already been approved, to my understanding. I will say that, just a little bit of information from me learning about the grant, it goes as far to put funding aside for the officer's office supplies. It goes that far to make sure that there's not any indirect costs to the taxpayers. And so I, I really do think that the concern here will be taken care of.
Alderwoman Franks?
I had a question. So the Rosecrans counselor that would be at the jail, would she be full-time at the jail, or is that gonna be a part-time?
Full-time.
Full-time, forty hours a week?
Funded by the grant.
Okay.
So, you've got to think, you know, the full cost of this officer, the COSAP officer, is covered by the grant. The only numbering question is if, if there's gonna be overtime. The chief has made it clear if the alderperson's not monitoring overtime, that we would be able to fulfill that wish. Otherwise, the wages are covered, office supplies are covered, office space is covered, supplies are covered. It will cover the cost salary of that veteran officer. So the city would be able to bring in a new officer at much lower costs. That's a, a huge move.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So I, I think we have in our audience a county board member, Mr. Riley. Can you tell us about how long it would take something like this to get through the board and back to us for approval?
I would assume we would have to go through judicial there. I would assume we would have to go through finance and personnel, personnel committee.
Right, they would have to go through a committee, and then the county board. It's, today was the day to publish the new act of the committee for administration, which it probably should be on, for Wednesday. We do have the flexibility that we can put things on the finance meeting if they don't meet the deadline. So, in theory, it could be on the county board this month. Obviously, I can't make any promises as to whether the county board would do that or not. And we can just tell them that per the open meeting act and per our agenda process, that it could timely be on. If I could also just say something else about the grant. So I worked on the IGA with the city attorney, Drella, and, and I, I'm sorry, I slipped outside for a minute, but this is covered, I apologize. But everything is covered in the grant for the officer, including the incidentals for that position. The overtime is written in so that it can only be approved by the chief, and that's in the IGA. So it's not like someone else could, the program director could assign that. In addition, the grant, you can ask for amendments, as long as they aren't full clock, like removing an officer, that's a huge, that's half of the grant. But you can ask for adjustments here and there, and I know Ms. Nell was asking for overtime to also be paid by the grant. But that is not been yet approved, but it's very possible that the Department of Justice could authorize that, and overtime could be paid as well. Obviously, I can't make that promise to you, but just to let the council know that we are moving forward, trying to cover that piece as well. And I don't know if Justice will have an update on, any kind of feedback from the Department of Justice.
Alderman Snow?
And I, timing-wise, I would think, because we have to prove this at a city council, unless we do a special city council meeting, that their meeting's gonna be, their final approval's gonna be two days after, or three days, because you guys do it on Thursday, it's gonna be three days after. We should have already taken care of this two weeks from now. So, timing-wise, I, I think this is a foolhardy endeavor, but that's my opinion. I'll be voting no for the OT amendment.
Anybody else? Anything else? Alderman Burton?
Yeah, just to say again, for anybody that doesn't know, my main issue with this is that it's a county position being dumped on the city, so I don't support that.
Anybody else? If not, we have an amendment to the motion, which is to, motion to hire the entry-level police officer to backfill for the experienced officer being assigned to the COSAP grant position, and also then amend the intergovernmental agreement to include the county on the incidentals and the, and any other costs. Is that...
Non-grant covered costs.
Non-grant covered costs. So we have a motion and a second on that. Any, any other discussion on that? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Porter?
No.
Snow?
No.
Sorry. Prather?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Nay.
Mahal?
Nay.
Four in favor?
Motion failed. Okay, then we have the original motion on the floor. The original motion to authorize the Belvidere Police Department to hire an entry-level police officer to backfill for the experienced officer being assigned to the COSAP grant position. Clerk will call the roll.
Prather?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Yes.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed. Under new business, we have ordinance number 534H for first reading, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, police department vehicles, and approving the purchase of new vehicles. We'll show that received and placed on file. Item B, we have a motion to waive the two-week layover requirement of section 2-87G of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code with respect to the ordinance number 535H, an ordinance authorizing the sale of a vacant lot located at 407 West Madison Street. So, as I understand it, if we waive this two-week layover, we can conclude business with ordinance 535H for a second reading? Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor. You'll recall, when this came to committee, the council asked if this could be placed on the agenda to waive the two-week layover requirement to allow the Habitat for Humanity to break ground and get moving on this project a little bit quicker. This requires a motion and a second on this vote, and it would require seven aye votes to pass.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion? If not, not, the clerk will call the roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, and then, so, an ordinance, item C, an ordinance 535H, an ordinance authorizing the sale of the vacant lot at 407 West Madison Street. Is there a motion? Alderman Snow, second? Alderwoman Mahal? Any discussion? Not? Alderman, Alderwoman Freeman?
So is it, did we not decide to donate this to Habitat for Humanity?
I believe that's what the ordinance says, it's going to Habitat.
The motion that I had read did not include the language Habitat for Humanity, so you're correct.
It is going to Habitat for Humanity, that's correct.
It is going to Habitat for Humanity if the motion and second agree? Okay. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman Freeman. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
So it says the sale of a vacant lot, not the donation?
I believe it was a sale for zero dollars.
Yeah.
As opposed to one dollar, another good and valuable considerations.
All right, we good with that? Any other discussion? Questions? Okay, clerk will call the roll.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Motion's forwarded from the Committee of the Whole Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of April 26, 2021. Chairman Burton?
Thank you, Your Honor. A, motion to authorize purchase of two 2021 Dodge Durangos at a cost of $92,230, $33,115, plus upfitting of $13,000 each, and two 2021 Dodge Chargers at a cost of $80,020, $30,010, plus upfitting at $10,000 each, with a total cost not to exceed $172,250. Payment to come from the 2022 capital fund line item.
Okay. Any discussion? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Go ahead, Chairman Burton.
B, motion to authorize the sale of two surplus police vehicles, 2012 Dodge Durango, Vin... 2012 Dodge Durango, VIN number 1C4RDJFG9EC358761, and a 2014 Dodge Durango, VIN number 1C4RDJFGXCC361440, to the Kuna's Dodge dealership of Belvedere for the total sale price of $14,000.
Okay, I believe City Attorney Drell had a comment here.
I do, Your Honor, and I should have caught this actually when I reviewed the agenda that the clerk presented, but if I am correct, I'd ask for check ordinance 534H. I think that's the same motion that you've previously approved this evening.
It is.
So, that can be, yeah, it's moving to be stricken from this agenda. It was already just decided up at 534H. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your practice.
I do it all day long.
All right.
So, does that bring us to C?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Letter C. Motion to replace squad number two with a 2021 Dodge Charger at a cost not to exceed $41,062.50, with payment to come from the $20,062.50 check from CCMSI, and $14,000 from the sale of two Dodge Durangos.
Okay, any discuss, any discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
So, if we haven't passed the motion, A, to, or B, to sell these vehicles, how are we passing a motion to buy something with the sale of the vehicles?
534.
That's 534. Or it's 534H.
That was my understanding, that was done at an earlier time. Is that correct?
And the reason for that is the state statute requires the disposition of personal property that needs to be done by ordinance, so that's why that was an ordinance that appeared earlier in the agenda. Of course, it's not done yet. That was first reading.
Yeah, I'm confused, because on B, we did not authorize the sale for the $14,000.
Which you can't do. It has to be done by ordinance, which was the first reading, which was 534H. That was a first reading.
I should not have had it as B as well. It's been done twice.
How are we using the money in C if we haven't?
That ordinance will pass in two weeks, so it's earmarked, and you purchase the vehicles once you approve that ordinance, and final.
We can use the money before we approve the sale?
No, you're authorizing the expenditure. You can't spend the money until the sale's complete.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Clerk will...
Okay.
Help me out?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, and...
D, motion to authorize the Belvedere Police Department to purchase, build, and install a new network server not to exceed $10,583, to come from the Belvedere Police Department equipment line item.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Franks?
This is for the body cams. Are we using body cams now, even though we don't have the software, or is this just updating the software?
Nope, we currently do not have the body cams implemented. We're waiting on this to be installed in order for us to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, what's the timeline, then, for body cams?
Probably about three, four weeks.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed. Under motions of finance and personnel, I'll read that. I haven't had the opportunity yet to appoint anybody since Mr. Ratcliffe has fulfilled his term, so... E, a motion to approve the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding as to improvement of the Belvedere Cemetery Association land and Belvedere Park District recapture agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank? Ten in favor?
Motion passed, and motion of public works, Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you. F, motion to approve the block party request at 140 Beacon Drive on July 10, 2021, with an ending time of 10:00 PM.
Right, any discussion to that motion? If not, clerk call the roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, and with that, that concludes our evening tonight. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Let the record show, we adjourned at 8:55 PM. Thank you.
Do a call on that?
Pardon me?
Do you wanna do a call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, roll call on the, motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Snow. Used another meeting. Second, Alderman Porter? All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.